My name is Buckey Walsh. I'm going to call this meeting the broadband authority. I note the presence of a quorum. We have two absent members, Mr. Andrews and Mr. Henry. We knew they would be absent in advance, but we have four members present in the room. So let us proceed. First item after the quorum is approval of the agenda. Will, I believe you have a suggestion for amending our consent.
The minutes will be considering on the main minutes, not the February March minutes.
Okay with that? Good, having already previously. Very good. Any other changes? Then that'll be the agenda we have. Are there any announcements from authority members? Hearing any? We'll move right on. Public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public who are on the call or in the room. Uh, to raise their hand figuratively or literally. We'll give you three minutes or so to address the authority.
Is this the first time anybody's joining?
Uh, just steps.
Okay.
Jim is. How was we gonna, so we have to move till I have to just.
Is he on board? Is he wants to participate?
Yes, I understand. And he can't, doesn't make part of our forum, but he can still vote and be part of the team as soon as he hears.
Okay. Jim, do you?
Uh, can you hear me? I can hear the room now. Yes, thank you. When the recording started, I could hear. And uh, uh, I'm here at uh, nine oh one Hatherley in Towson, Maryland, and um, uh, I'm actually uh, on personal business, so.
We're good. I can move that we accept Mr. Andrews' participation in this meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Jim, you're on the team.
Thank you.
And if at any time we are not perfectly audible to you, please don't hesitate to interrupt and say, speak up or what is necessary.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so. Uh, the public comment, we didn't have anyone else from the public commenting, so we'll move on from there to the consent agenda. Immediately on the next sheet. You noted that you had made some edits to this.
I have. I uh, adjusted a few things as votes told.
I think my understanding was you were trying to sneak something through while Trevor was away.
Uh, I like to take that point of Trevor's away, um, to just see what's.
You're not a good career builder, man.
Uh, the two things I want to highlight, I adjusted the body twenty two. Uh, whole budget to reflect uh, the transfer to uh, the part broke. And I adjusted body twenty one's original budget to reflect the current.
Lower sale.
Exactly. Well, no, I'm sorry. Uh, to to reflect the last amendment, uh, not the current amendment. Uh, and that's what leaves us with a uh, remaining encumbrance after all it's been to restore this project of eighty five thousand seven hundred and forty three. Um, so uh, so again, the change to the original budget is the change of what the HCD was considering. While leaving an encumbrance uh, to be original sixty four thousand dollars that uh, Abba presented to me. That one is in. But uh, but you can see the invoicing submitted if needed. Um, and that gives us balances that actually reflect.
Across the board.
Um, and remaining encumbrances for the body twenty two project. Uh, of two point four million dollars, um, which we consider. Uh, that was. My invoices submitted for work done. Again, there. It seems going to be approaching the halfway point uh, at the same level. Any other questions about that?
Just your comment, I wouldn't mind approaching the ninety percent point, uh, you know, if, if that'll come in a few months.
I agree.
Okay. Uh, with that said, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this agenda is approved. Now we come to the approval of the May moving minutes. Were there any changes or alterations to those minutes in December? They, they were a good read, even though I wasn't here.
I said the right version this time, sort of the notes.
Always a help.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve? All those in favor of approving the May minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, those are approved. All business. Body twenty twenty.
Been a long time coming. Um, after um, some. Also adjust when you need cashing. One thousand twenty fifteen locations that can be reviewed. Um, I kind of on the go with a little bit something, uh, but I'll actually uh, adding uh, additional locations from uh, the major areas to uh, this project. Um, we're obviously on for the move, some uh, bargaining terms to update. Um, they agreed to that amount and to basically early uh, their uh, contribution to two thousand one hundred and nine thousand two hundred and forty eight. We, we adjusted ours to five hundred fifty four thousand six hundred and fifty seven thousand, also seven forty thousand. Um, and those invoices were submitted then for payment once payment is confirmed, once those checks are completed, also that's the invoice for the DHC. Also, we also submitted the. Um, and specifically our very, when the. From the audit, yeah. And that is something that uh, in general, they want us to accomplish within forty days. And so that was June sixteen that we put some of them in, so by July, we should have the schedule. There's any changes to that, I'm glad you all know, but hopefully. We will not be discussing this again next month. Any more questions?
Do you have any questions? I assume you said no.
I, I'm not, I'm having a little trouble understanding you, Jason. When you talk, it sounds muffled, but everybody else is very clear.
I will get closer to the microphones. Is that better?
A little bit, yes, thank you. It's not the volume, though, it's actual uh, something else.
Hearing no questions, um, let's move on to body twenty twenty two. I expect we have lots of questions.
Yeah, um, so the quarterly meeting happens uh, last month, um, stakeholder meeting, um, and this is a slide from the presentation at that meeting. Um, the highlight uh, in terms of uh, the largest portion of news is that this project, uh, they are planning to request an extension all the way till June twenty twenty six. Um, I'll point out two things, uh, that are important to that. One, uh, that still puts us ahead of the ARPA, uh, money goes away, uh, bonus in December, uh, twenty twenty six. Um, and despite that, they still plan on Albemarle's portion being completed by middle rail than December twenty twenty five. No, so that is the current expectation. Um, there were a couple of project areas that uh, just slipped, largely related to needing for partners to do the portion. Um, two project areas, uh, really free in, really small, we have a project area in the Stone Point East End project area. Um, both are counting together, about a thousand houses, about one foot with the project. Um, that are being delayed and getting ahead of myself, so I'm excited about it. Uh, are being delayed, uh, because they are looking for uh, locations in the product to install some fiber huts. Um, where you'll be able to provide multi gigabit service across the streets. Um, and that is the uh, the decision that they made, that rather than forward, uh, limit themselves in those two areas with the same look of resources. We're going to find another location for the fiber hut and actually multiply the list with this at all locations. Um, at most, where in the fall, they suggested this would be the two seasons slide. Uh, into winter of, I'm sorry, into fall of uh, twenty twenty five. Um, but in general, we've been talking about the end of twenty twenty five is the issue project in our market. For reasons, you know, complex projects and all sorts of things can get involved.
One, just those two areas, a number of other areas slid from spring to summer.
That's correct. Um, so uh, there were previously on the, on the left side there, uh, is uh, a lot of those uh, RNC and RISE project areas are slated for spring twenty twenty five. The monos need to summer twenty twenty five. You can expect a lot more updates to this page in the next few weeks. Um, as they uh, nail down exactly what project. By average.
Given the number that slid from spring to summer, it would not surprise me to see some of the summers become falls. Just, just making the connection.
Yep, um, it is memorable. Dominion gave their update as well, uh. This is just, uh, this is the same slide as last month's and uh, there's some progress in terms of uh, miles completed, um, up to one thousand seven hundred miles out to eleven by two K. So you made good progress in your report, uh, they suggested that.
They, they've added ten miles.
They've just, but they have, uh, they have, uh, they're at the point where a lot of these are, uh, are a lot closer than, than the looks. Um, often we got the lines up. You just haven't tested them. They can't, they can't release them until they're tested. So, um, we're hopeful that we're missing a lot more progress before the next one in the year. Um, but on top of Firefly's updates, um, as we see uh, construction updates change.
We probably all would have been surprised if there weren't some delays in the project. But there's no hint of problems or concerns, or you know, Gary didn't raise any red flags, just, just were delayed.
It is, it is, um, even on that, on that earlier page, uh, that earlier. Um, that early slide, uh, he may loans, uh, great project across area, most of the back construction complete that process, but not. Um, and so I think he's, he's confident about that on this uh, date.
Very maybe basic question, but I'll explain what seems like an impossibility to me. We're being told that the backbone is projected to be finished in honor before December twenty twenty five. How are projects that I would imagine rely on that being targeted at being completed before that?
And so the.
I'm probably misunderstanding something.
The, the backlog component is uh, most of what Dominion and uh, somewhat Firefly and Appalachian Power Areas is building on existing power facilities. Um, and so uh, that precedes the actual connecting uh, and burying uh, additional fiber. Um, where possible, Firefly has been going ahead and burying stuff and they know where it's going to go. Um, what makes the, those buildings in the Stone Point area is tricky, that you don't know where the fibers are. You don't know where all of the other components are. Um, and so that's, that's where the disconnect problem is, is that. Um, they can have the uh, all of the middle mile construction done, not by the end of August. Um, there can still be some delays of the, of where that fiber hut's going to go, um, and then actually burying all the.
Thinking through, so what I'm hearing is that the backbone and the middle mile are entirely separate, like paths that we are tracking simultaneously with different due dates. I want to make sure I'm understanding, like.
The backbone and the middle mile are the same.
Oh, oh, it's our area. Yeah, maybe than the final mile.
Yeah, exactly.
The final, and last mile are separate project strains. I want to make sure, because I previously assumed I can communicate to the public based on their project area, the timelines that uh, that are presented in this table, right? It's sounding like that's not strictly true if the middle mile is actually finishing later than, than some of those.
So two factors, yep. Uh, one, they, at the bottom of this uh, slide and on their construction updates page, they run uh, uh, the end date for each of those uh, seasons. Uh, and so uh, if August is when they're going to put a middle mile construction to begin. Um, they've got another month.
It's September is when the summer season ends.
To, and to test connect and then uh, length, uh, the project areas that are expected by summer, uh, that haven't slipped. That's why we'll keep a close eye on that. Um, ordering is guaranteed to happen for those areas that are completed by summer. Um, by the end of September, September. Um, whether you actually get to the line, that's something scheduled at that point. Right, so delivery of service is not necessarily in the summer, uh, but the possible type of service. Sure means.
Maybe in six months ago, they were having trouble with rights debate. Did you get any update on that?
Um, I've asked, uh, and there hasn't been any suggestion of issues that they've seen, um, related to uh, permits and real crossings and those sorts of things. Uh, in terms of communities that have been struggling, I mean, there was one that's dozen total. Um, and then uh, one on uh, it's technically taken on account. Um, that is uh, still a complete issue. Um, if uh, this delay, if it not yet to reach a resolution, that that issue, um, we certainly need to bring the members back immediately to voice concern, uh, as, and also the Firefly, um, and.
Yeah. The fiber hut location issue. Is that related to like the available space on eastmans that exist? Is it just related to the topography of the region that was driving it?
Identifying a suitable location that, uh, had to be discussed before is the one on Yankee, um, it's, you know, used to be a twenty by twenty pad and the twelve by fifteen building. And it all pre-fired, it can be done on. Dropping, uh, like on a train, holding to the ground, hook it up.
Helicopter.
I mean, it'd be wonderful if they did that. That'd be pretty cool to watch, but um, they are looking, um, at uh, either uh, private uh, access or losing uh, privately. They're also looking at uh, the fire stations, the bus stations, all possible schedules. Um, whether those are the most suitable locations, you know, the most uh, easily accessible locations. Um, is, is kind of up to the network to probably be whether it is. Uh, the problem.
You guys at the fire station at Earl's, have a bit of burning down structures for testing, but I just, I wouldn't encourage that as a location.
Certainly they can make sure they, they put it on the far side.
Do not burn, yeah, big sign on it, I don't know, so, okay.
Could you say more about the multi gigabit options? Is that, is the idea that would be sent to their entire service area here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you're talking two and a half gigabit and uh, launching, uh, might have to be like launching this.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's. Great, that's. Very optimistic news on their part, so it doesn't bode ill.
It's a good mix of, of good news ones. Must work.
Well, I didn't expect they would stay on schedule. I just wish I had fiber internet now. Trying to temper my, my expectations.
I was just.
Any other questions? Let's move along.
Next, um, the, a, a brief D A and uh, updates, um, we've covered cancellation, we did what, we have, that's what we wanted. About all these, we can work on our. Anything as well as uh, updates on the. Um, following a social media post, an alert to the V G office broadband, uh, at Department of Management Development, Digital Equity Act, some digital skills, community devices program has been paused. Um, I spoke directly with uh, the director, the, of the office, uh, to confirm that they're not canceling and they're going to actually keep reviewing their applications. Uh, make determinations, um, and then just hold them until funding is available. Um, there are lots of international efforts to develop and social to, 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 based on, um, the, uh, the activism also potentially traditionally. Uh, but uh, for now, my, that funding, uh, led us uh, at least uh, four hundred thousand dollars, uh, to begin doing digital design for some work, supporting human organizations and expanding our community area. Um, is on hold, uh, we're going to continue to do what we, we do, funding that we have, uh, and explore options for expanding our reach, uh, within the resources that we have, uh, and also uh, funding, funding up to these resources like two months.
Can I ask a follow up on this that's maybe out of your wheelhouse, but am I correct? I feel like my understanding from when something like this happened previously, that they can only pause it for three months. Uh, without congressional actions. Did I make that up?
I mean, I think, uh, if you asked, uh, an attorney, uh, particularly one that specialized in constitutional issues, they're probably, but there's actually a mechanism uh, by the president to cancel, uh, legislative funding programs.
Here we are.
So, uh, I, I, you know, you can say all sorts of things, like.
I don't know, but.
I remember learning about this a lot on like January twenty seventh or whenever it was, um.
Somewhere there's a court of appeals that will answer this question.
At some point.
It won't happen in this room. Do you not want to go to court and give us that money?
I feel like I do.
Well, yeah, I think we could go to court and get that money. That is a, a question for beyond the broadening.
Um, I, I will, I will go ahead and I find that, uh, we need to get, uh, need to get the judge to consider, uh, our standing based on the possibility of the grant use. Um, but I will note that there were only thirteen.
That's a good critique, never.
There were only thirteen billion uh, dollars worth of applications and it was a fifteen million dollar pot, so our odds were good.
You actually filled in the form. Sounds like you were in good shape.
Yeah. Um, but uh, I, I will say that we will add diversity, use spring, whatever actions. Any other questions on that one? Is it going to leave? Sorry. And no other questions. Uh, our development, given recent developments, uh, uh, we're going to take advantage of our existing, uh, Virginia uh, affordability and adoption funding grant, uh, which has spent about thirty thousand dollars, about a hundred thousand dollars to actually bolster our digital economy uh, effort concerning our business as well. Uh, she's open to more extended timeline, her current consultant is actually working on more. Uh, for representation, they're going to consider, um, doing a survey, uh, to gauge, uh, some more hard data on, uh, digital inclusion issues in the region. Uh, we're also going to look at, uh, potentially using this funding as a pilot for a tool, uh, that would help us with client and partner relations management. Um, this is uh, something we've been, uh, internally talking about, uh, for a while, um, and uh, having read a lot, uh, from this author about alternative approaches to, uh, software procurement, uh, in the government space. I think it'd be really interesting to see if we could actually run a, a pilot sprint, where we do have, uh, a simple, uh, minimum viable product with stakeholders across the region, then we'll be putting this to the brakes. Uh, and see where we get, uh, ahead of potential.
That's something you and I might want to talk about.
I was going to suggest exactly that thing. You, you might have had an experience once or twice.
Once or twice, uh, and I'm with a nonprofit that helps for free. There's my other points, gladly except that. Um, and the other idea that we have, uh, this is a point that we want to, uh, be able to have long legs, uh, be well represented, um, as we spread it to community partners, the county partners, um, and also, uh, have a, a good web presence, because we'll be able to have a digital inclusion for that. Good, uh, so we're also going to bring in some maximum level to, uh, do a high production, uh, printed version, uh, for hanging out, uh, events, also, uh, a well-made, uh, attractive, informative website. Um, so any questions on those? We're good, okay. Um, and the D W, uh, Department of Commerce introduced their benefit of the bargain guidance, uh, this was, uh, guidance put out to N T I A. Um, that requires states to reopen application windows, especially if you consider them. Uh, to recap, uh, the state had actually conceded its, uh, commission round, um, and was ready to enter into the I A eleven to announce, uh, provisional awards, um, and move forward with, uh, the final, uh, proposal and games, uh, once in contract, uh, and the H C D, uh, has, has decided to really, uh, push the envelope in terms of speed to try and to, 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 to benefit of the bargain around. Um, the guidance did also remove regulatory considerations, uh, and also people added, uh, wireless technologies for fiber. And it removed any local involvement, um, and, uh, the H C D's guidance reflects that. Um, they planned on opening their letter of entitlement the same day the guidance was issued, uh, closing it, uh, just a couple of days ago. Um, and then start to receive applications. Uh, I was able to obtain the full complement of letters when, when, of course, submitted, um, previously Bright Screen and, uh, podcasts in the, in the power region, we, well, uh, traded applications in our region, we listened to, and others went to contact recently, um. Both of those are once made a file, um, as well as most of the other, uh, evidence that, uh, submitted letters and attend for our journey. Lots of applications for our area, um, angels and weights, uh, going to notify, uh, provisional awardees that they are the provisional awardees. Uh, we have a big second negotiation cycle. The negotiation cycle is where if they're not at a hundred percent of the state, uh, they try to find other partners to fill in the remaining percentage, um, and then submit that to, uh, N T I A and then wait approval. Um, they want to do that by, uh, on speaking, that is the earliest, but we will find out who has received, uh, an award in our area. Um, we reference the American one, which is that remain Alamo County after the body of seventeen. Um, and although, uh, the one thing that, that, uh, the state did to perhaps reflect on the prior work, um, these let me establish the fifty point, uh, credit for the prior, we just want to put a prior, uh, criminal um, so as long as the bids, uh, are, I mean, fifteen percent of each other. Uh, now, for those who does not win, you're setting into a point system, in the point system, uh, provisional will be, uh, so never was explicitly awarded. Uh, would have an advantage in that sense.
Can you be able to summarize for us the, uh, the applicants and such that are in our area by our August meeting?
Um, well, hopefully, uh, they will, they will submit a final proposal by August meeting and that will be submitted publicly for our comment. So like obviously, uh, we'd like being touched about possibly us making public comment on that file proposal at the end of August meeting. Uh, the, uh, obviously is the soonest that, uh, we would see those boards.
I'm going to experience a totally silly.
And, uh, that August gift meeting is also, uh, conditional on N T I A's approval, uh, well, now, now I believe, I think the, this is not.
You don't have any sense from, uh, U C D. How much money people would be needing for, do you?
Yeah.
Okay, good for them, good for them, keeping it secret.
Yeah. Well, my thinking, uh, was, we're going to be about twenty five then. Um, I did inquire whether, uh, to not receive, um, that's not even, uh, uh, clear against, um, certainly before addition of the links. Um, and this is the incremental funds, I know we're going to, to help people. I think that these three hundred funds, the dollars are from, hey, about twenty five then. Um, but.
Ooh, I mean, they have how many years to build out under this contract?
Four from the contract, it's not the important date. Um, there is, there are focus points, um, for, uh, uh, getting, uh, the work done sooner rather than later.
Focus points are both.
I just, uh, there are points associated, uh, in the, the, uh, sporting round, if those are still on, I mean, or. And for uh uh speed of completion.
Oh, if they claim they can get a complete.
Um the.
You were claimed.
The first threshold to the two points is thirty eight points from all contracts.
The opposite of that, actually, that's awful, okay?
Okay, um it's, it it was, it wasn't an encouraging tendency that that. Um our concern with the uh the whole time was that these three locations were going to be the last ones, you know, and then to get service. Um and it would be a shame if because of logistics of a large project, these three having locations. Down the timeline, you know, they're sparse across the entire counties. It is one of the reasons why uh in our level of intent, I mean, I've moved uh contest. Expedite uh this project, and if they are the awardee, then you know, you will work with them to try to come up with a timeline for these community members. Uh I I hope reasonable um for both parts. Um and we'll do that whoever's the one, um but. We're still in the waiting. That's all, uh.
Thank you, sir. Is there any new business? Any other matters, you just wanna chit chat about?
Not a lot of great news this time around, but.
No, not a news, the military needs.
Get the hand that's been dealt to us.
We need to have better news if we're gonna have meetings. Just saying. I'll hold you personally responsible. But you were the one who did the.
I will endeavor to find you some good news, I can even, if you'd like me to add that to your view, I could end up in a times.
Our our next meeting is scheduled for July twenty fifth, if we don't have any particular business or news. You want me to cancel that meeting? As much as we can. If there is no other business, is there a motion to adjourn? Some of those in favor of adjourning, say aye, aye? Jim, thanks very much for participating today, we really appreciate it.
Uh thank you for letting me join.
I think we're adjourned.
Right, thanks.
Okay, take care.